Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka. Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne.
Here. Everybody please. Is there a motion? Point to trustee. President Protem.
It's all made.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next item then is citizens wishing to address the board. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board on something? Everybody else is here for something on the agenda. Okay. In that case, moving on. Hang on one second. Okay, the first thing under the president's report is a proclamation for Payroll Week, September 4th through the 8th, whereas the American Payroll Association and its more than 20,000 members have launched a nationwide public awareness campaign that pays tribute to the nearly 150 million people who work in the United States and the payroll professionals who support the American system by paying wages, reporting worker earnings, and withholding federal employment taxes. I'm not sure everybody's happy about that, but... Payroll professionals in Vernon Hills play a key role in maintaining the economic health of Vernon Hills, carrying out such diverse tasks as paying into the unemployment insurance system, providing information for child support enforcement, and carrying out tax withholding, reporting, and depositing. Payroll departments collectively spend more than $2.4 trillion annually, complying with a myriad of federal and state wage and tax laws. Payroll professionals play an increasingly important role ensuring the economic security of American families by helping to identify non-custodial parents and making sure they comply with their child support mandates. Payroll professionals have become increasingly proactive in educating both the business community and the public at large about the payroll tax withholding system. Payroll professionals meet regularly with federal and state tax officials to discuss both improving compliance with government procedures and how compliance can be achieved at less cost to both government and businesses. The week in which Labor Day falls has been proclaimed National Payroll Week. Now therefore be proclaimed that Roger Byrne, president of the village of Vernon Hills, hereby proclaims September 4th through the 8th, 2023, as Payroll Week in the village of Vernon Hills. Yeah, without them we...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, no. I was just curious, like where... Like this proclamation, where it comes from in terms of like, is it requested by a national board? Or does some in the community request the proclamation?
Yeah, we had a request. I can't remember the source of the request, but we had a request to celebrate Payroll Week and requested to put that on the agenda, so.
And we're happy to celebrate anything in this town.
Well, I was gonna say, I mean, there's all kinds of things people can request. I mean, my garbage doesn't get picked up. I would like to have a proclamation for those guys. You know?
We'll find out what that means.
I think we can... Yeah, I just kind of, it just caught my eye, like, Payroll Week, huh? Okay. How about the people that pay the payrolls? They get one?
National. Well, when Boss's Day comes... What was Boss's Day is what? Next May? We can come up with a... Okay, anybody? No report from village manager, assistant village manager. The only thing we've got is the Public Works Director, Village Engineer, Milwaukee Avenue Bike and Pedestrian update.
Yeah, so I wanted to give an update on the Milwaukee Avenue Bike and Pedestrian Railroad crossing. So after several years of planning and working with multiple regulatory agencies, Wisconsin Central has finally completed the crossing of the railroad along Milwaukee Avenue. This is, it's really exciting that this, we now have a completely continuous uninterrupted bicycle and pedestrian path along all of Milwaukee Avenue from the far north end of the village all the way to the south. So I think this was a big accomplishment towards our bike and pedestrian network within the village. I would also call your attention on the agenda, item K is the... One of the first payments or invoices from Wisconsin Central for this work. Now that, once the village pays that, we will then invoice Pulte, the developer for the Cuneo, to, we have a reimbursable agreement with them that the village will get reimbursed for this work. So if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them about this crossing.
Did I speak correctly? It was, the cost on this project was $400,000?
That, that's, so this is just a progress payment. It's the lion's share of it. I think the original cost estimate for this work was around $440,000, but that happened a couple of years ago, so with inflation and material costs going up, we're expecting it to be a little more than that.
And do we put like the new crossing guards in there too? Is that all part of that project? Those are all new crossing guards?
The installation, the crossing included new arms, pedestrian arms, new approaches. We also had to upgrade the signal cabinet to be able to power those. The existing infrastructure wasn't enough. So Wisconsin Central did all that work. We also had to, Pulte had to do some connections to complete the sidewalk network to where it was left off before, as well as some coordination with IDOT completing the interconnects so these, so that these signals can talk to the traffic signals on either side, the one immediately north and the, and south of the intersection, so.
Okay.
Not directly related to this, but you know, I brought it up in the past regarding crosswalks at... On 60, as of right now, we just have it at Milwaukee and Fairway. And is there any, any hope or any plan to add additional crosswalks somewhere in between there?
That is something that, that we're looking into. Right now, it's, you're correct, it's Lakeview Parkway and then at Milwaukee, and I think there's a three intersection gap there. We don't have any crossings on 60. It is IDOT's jurisdiction, so there's many additional hurdles to go through that, but it's something that we're investigating of what it would take, how we could potentially include that in future planning efforts and get it into the CIP. So there's gonna be more to come, I think, on those, those intersection crossings.
Okay. I would think some of the residents, as they move into the, especially residents moving into the apartments, would like to have some way to cross other than having to go to Milwaukee if there's...
Agreed, yeah, absolutely. It's a long stretch.
It's a really long stretch, yeah.
There's no pedestrian access.
Yeah, or bike access.
Okay, anything else on this? Nothing else from staff?
There's one other thing that I'd like to draw your attention to. Items E and L on the omnibus refer to the Vernon Hills Town Center. Lot four, last, our last meeting brought this to the committee of the whole. The concept plan, so since then, this was bid out. It's on, on the agenda for award today. It did include some of the comments that were made last time, including having a table in that, in that park area. So just wanted to...
So E, do we need to prove, pull both E and L or just E?
Just E.
L already has a waiver, so just E.
L already has the, okay. All right, so just E? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Then in that case, the next thing is the omnibus vote agenda, and E is gonna be polled. So it's items A through D and F through R. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second. One comment I would make is, somebody might want to let the... On Har, the Salvation Army, somebody might want to let them know that Ms. Schwartz is no longer village clerk.
That was hilarious.
Their letter, their letter was addressed to Jean Schwartz, the village clerk, and Jean hasn't been here in quite a few years.
Been quite a while.
Yeah. So you might want to let the Salvation Army know that. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any comments or questions? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye, aye.
Chairman Protem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Item E is approval and passage of ordinance 2023-077 and ordinance authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with Rockstar Concrete to perform concrete work at the Vernon Hills Town Center in an amount not to exceed $45,000. And this is needs...
We want to have a motion approved with the addition of a waiver of competitive...
Waiver of, with the addition of waiver of competitive bidding. So is there a motion to that extent?
Motion to approve with a waiver.
So why, why are we doing it with a waiver of competitive bidding?
The item proposals were sent out to six specific contractors, but it wasn't advertised publicly for competitive bidding. So because there was no advertisement, we have to waive the competitive bidding process.
Okay, and why was it not? It might have done that other way?
There was, in order to get this work done this season, we wanted to get with the landscaping work and the concrete work for the Vernon Hills Town Center. It was a time crunch to get it for this, this meeting, so we sent it out to multiple contractors and solicited bids. So it just, it was a, it was a step to save the time of the advertising process.
So it was bid, but not...
I mean, you have four bids, right?
Yeah, we sent out to six contractors. We received four proposals. They were all very, very close, you can see, so it's competitive pricing that we received, but it didn't follow the formal competitive bid process.
Competitive bidding requires advertising publicly. You can, you can definitely send it to selected contractors who you like to work with, who do good work, which is what we did to get a competitive price, but competitive bidding also requires public advertisement in a newspaper or publication.
What's the advantage to us to do competitive bidding versus just all...
Statutorily required.
And then?
May not be an advantage.
Okay, so then, so how are we able to just, just put it in the ordinance that we weren't doing it that way?
You have to waive competitive bidding, which you're allowed to do by state statute, by a two-thirds vote of the trustees, so it's... Unless it's competitively bid with a public advertisement, even though you did solicit six different proposals, you have to waive bidding. So you see waiver of competitive bidding from time to time, that's why.
What's to stop a municipality from always having a two-third vote to waive it?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No, nothing.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Okay.
But is the timeline on this? I mean, it seems like we got the bids and now we're going back and waiving it. That's... That's a lot.
Oh, you waive at the time of approval, so this, you're doing this correctly. This is not out of order. It's at the time of ultimate approval that the waiver must occur.
Yeah, it was competitively bid, but not in the kind of competitive bidding with the public. That's the only difference.
Missed one, one element.
Yeah.
One piece, but for a reason. Not, it wasn't an oversight.
Correct.
They wanted to get the work done this year, and they sent it out to six contractors that are trusted, that we've had experience with. So I, I don't think the village is at any kind of disadvantage due to this waiver, if that's what you're asking.
Any other comments or questions? So we have a motion, a second, correct?
We need a second.
Need a second still.
A second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Any unfinished additional business? No, so we go to...
Oh wait, quick question. So we, we approved the waiver. Do we have to approve now the spending?
No, it's all part of the...
Because we didn't, we took it out of the omnibus though, right? It's all part of the same thing?
It was a combined motion. It was a motion to waive and approve.
Right.
A combined motion.
Yeah, that's why we pulled it from omnibus, was to change it. Okay, then, under New Business and Communication, we have a number of items first. Approval and passage of ordinance 2023-084 and ordinance amending ordinance 2022-097, which granted approvals to facilitate the redevelopment of 890 Milwaukee Avenue?
Thank you. 890 Milwaukee Avenue is the former Denny's. It was originally approved as a multi-unit building about a year ago. One of the two tenants that was a prospective tenant at the time of the approval elected not to go through the project, and the owner of the property has found a new tenant. The new tenant is a Mediterranean restaurant called Kava Grill. They would take the southernmost unit, the 100 unit. The plans for that restaurant include a outdoor dining area and an additional door to facilitate the traffic flow of customers coming in and out of the business, and a slight change to the appearance. They have a particular color scheme that they like to use on their restaurants for brand consistency. Planning and Zoning Commission had a public hearing in July on this, this request. It's considered to be a minor amendment to the original approval. Not technically published as a public hearing because it was a minor amendment, but it was a public meeting. Planning and Zoning Commission had no major objection. They did request that the patio area be expanded slightly to include a buffer from parked cars. The concern was that a car door might bang into the patio fence. They requested some additional landscaping to the west of the patio. The petitioner has since shown us a plan of how they would achieve that. The ordinance that you have in front of you for consideration tonight does reference that as a condition of approval. They have, they have since illustrated how they would achieve that, though. So beyond that, the only other concern was from the staff report to the Planning and Zoning Commission, just to confirm that there's adequate space in the trash enclosure. You have a, a more intense waste production with a restaurant, and we just want to ensure that there's adequate space for all the receptacles in the trash enclosure, even if that means expanding it slightly. So they do have adequate parking to do that if necessary. And as I said, this is a, an ordinance for your consideration. We don't have a second meeting in August, and in the interest of getting them through the entire process in a timely manner, we placed it on New Business tonight. With that, there are representatives of, I think, the ownership here, if you have any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Because this is basically not more of a, it's more of a change of who's coming in as opposed to a change in the building itself?
Minor modifications facilitate the new, the new tenant, yes.
Okay. Any questions? You said the petitioner's here. Did they want to get any airtime or no? No, okay. All right. Okay. So you're looking for approval on this tonight, right?
That's correct. It is ordinance 2023-84.
Okay, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-84?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, second item is approval and passage of ordinance 2023-85 and ordinance amending ordinance 2022-121, which amended some other ordinances of variation from the minimum lot size requirement in the B1 district for the Hawthorne Mall Outlots in the village.
Similar to the last item, in the interest of time, we've placed this on New Business so that the consideration of the Planning and Zoning Commission report and the ordinance itself can both be handled in the same evening. You may recall when the Perry Steakhouse was approved, there was a plot of subdivision attached to that. There was a three-lot subdivision along Milwaukee Avenue. At the time of the public hearing for that item, it wasn't, there was no division of the southern two lots such that we knew where the property line was gonna be. So it had not been published with a lot size variation, so it was approved with the condition that if the owner of the property ultimately needed a lot size less than 40,000 square feet, they would have to return and publish that particular variation, and that is what has occurred. There are two tenants south of Perry's that have been lined up by the property owner. They've adjusted the lot lines to match the space demands of those two tenants. The subdivision that you see in your packet does create a lot size less than 40,000 square feet, as I mentioned. The Planning and Zoning Commission had two concerns. One was the, the lot, the lot itself is not rectangular. It's got, it jogs around driveways and parking spaces to make sure that no lot ends up with half a parking space on it. And then the other concern was with the utilities. Utility locations are something that we can handle at a staff level at a later date once they're exactly sure where the footprint of the buildings would be. Other than that, Planning and Zoning Commission had no, no issues and has recommended approval. The ordinance in your packet tonight, which is ordinance 2023-85, would amend the prior approvals for the Hawthorne Mall PUD, which is how the Perry Steakhouse was approved. So with that, there are representatives of, of the property owners, engineering firm here, if you have any questions.
Are there any questions? This is just a kind of a technical cleanup, correct? Pretty much?
Yes, yes, it's, it's required because they did not originally publish for this lot size variation.
Okay.
Is the setback supposed to be 60 feet from Milwaukee?
I believe that's correct.
Is each frontage supposed to be 200 feet wide?
The, the minimum lot frontage for a lot? I, I believe that's correct as well, but the, the issue is the ultimate square foot. Is the 40,000 square foot number is not met on this lot.
Right, right, okay. All right, so bottom line is, are all three of the users, you know, asking for this? Does it include Perry's or no?
This is just the owner of the property requesting it based on the projection of the space demands for both of the tenants of the southernmost lots. So Perry's is settled. Their, their lot line, their southern lot line is not an issue. It's just the division between lot two and lot three.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
It looks like lot two is gonna be the small one, that's 35, 479. And so how many parking spaces would that allow for a...
We did a projection. I compared it because it went to the Planning and Zoning Commission the same night as Taco Bell and the Kava. We do have lots comparable size to this that do have standalone buildings with adequate parking on them. So I, I don't have a concern that they'll be able to, to meet the parking requirement. They also have the advantage in this case of having access to the, the new parking garage directly west across Mall Drive.
Did you say the ingress egress will be separated each plot?
I believe, I don't...
Or they, will they be, will there be a connection through all three?
They do, they are connected. I believe they jogged it around parking spaces so that they didn't end up with a parking space on one lot versus, you know, split.
I just keep a little concerned, you know, I'm assuming Perry's will have valet at night. You know, will they be parking cars? Will there's gonna be an agreement with the... Who, I don't know what the tenant, who the tenants will be. I just want to, you know, make sure that they're not...
This did, this did come up a little bit at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. The concern being the, the balance. The projection right now is that these users would be operating at different hours, different peak hours. One is a morning use and the others are not, so that would, that would be the idea. They're all held in common ownership right now, so the, the parking, they don't have a formal agreement to share the parking, but the response of the Planning and Zoning Commission was that if, if any of them were separated, they would do a shared parking agreement.
And you said, at least as of right now, the potential tenant is a morning tenant, but what happens if they pull out, just like the Denny's one pulled out, then, then it kind of limits them because they wouldn't be able to have another evening tenant if there isn't... I don't know if there would be or wouldn't be enough parking. They're expecting that.
As it's, as it's planned right now, each one does park itself realistically. If people see a parking space that's open right next to them, they may still use it, but each lot does meet the parking requirement projected for the, the use.
Okay, and for, for the current use and, and most likely potential use in the future? Okay.
And any potential users on those other lots would then be required to meet the requirements for that particular lot, so.
That's correct, or they would need to seek a variation.
Okay.
Shared agreements, assuming all three are occupied or all three are currently in business, would mean that they're all sharing the cost if they have to do a striping or a paving all, all at once, is that correct? When you have like a shared agreement like that, because at some point, let's just hypothetically, say one of those is no longer in business, who's taking care of the lot at that point? The leaseholder, the landowner then?
Right, right now, they are all owned by the same entity, and I don't know the details of the lease.
Whatever the lease agreement.
But an agreement can be written, however the parties decide.
Right.
So if it's under common ownership, they could write it so that the, the burden of the maintenance is spelled out a certain way.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on the board on this? Okay, then is there a motion to approve, this is just this ordinance number 23-085, correct?
That's correct.
Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, a second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Item three, approval and passage of ordinance 2023-086 and ordinance granting variations from appendix Z, appendix C zoning of the Vernon Hills Code related to building setbacks and parking stall dimensions for Taco Bell to be located at 700 Milwaukee Avenue.
Thank you.
And there's actually two back-to-back here.
Back-to-back, three and four are a package deal. The, the petitioner on this item was in front of the committee the whole a couple of months ago. Has since gone to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing. This is an existing drive-through. We discovered during the technical review that the, the drive-through didn't have a prior special use approval. We've worked with the petitioner to apply for that special use approval, really just to formally document that they do have the approvals necessary to continue operation. In conjunction with the special use application, we did find some minor variations from the zoning code in the existing conditions that I had advised the petitioner to go ahead and include. If you're going for one public hearing, you might as well address the existing conditions that were non-conforming on the site. So that is, that is why they are here. They do have a, a signed package that's still under review at the Planning and Zoning Commission, but that is not the subject of this. This is purely the, the special use for the drive-through, the associated landscape plan changes, the associated building appearance modifications. And then the second ordinance is a variation to cover existing non-conforming setbacks and an existing non-conforming parking stall dimension. The Planning and Zoning Commission at the hearing did have some minor concerns with the landscaping. Those concerns have been incorporated into the recommendation and passed on into the special use ordinance that you see. They had concerns with the amount of landscaping coming out around, around the drive-through and not being replaced with anything that had any additional height to it. Petitioner has agreed to add some height to that area. There was a... There was a concern regarding a purple light band associated with the branding of Taco Bell. The light itself is not visible. It's more of the glow from the light. Planning and Zoning Commission just wanted to make sure during the permit review that the amount of light projected by the band doesn't have any significant impact on the site photometrics. I do have a photograph of that in here. So that was the band, the Planning and Zoning Commission from the photographs, just wasn't sure how bright the purple was. Ultimately, did recommend approval with it, subject to the condition that we do check the photometrics to ensure that it's dim. Beyond that, petitioner is here to answer any questions you might have. There are a handful of conditions, as I said, in the, in the ordinance related to landscaping and the photometric review as mentioned.
Do we have a drawing, the ones in the packet? I had a little trouble understanding exactly where the, the drive-through was. Is it this?
Same spot.
Is it exactly the same as-
It's exactly the same. There's a slight, right now, there's a curb that projects toward the customer car where it makes it a little bit hard to pick up the food from the window. They're eliminating that little bump out, so it's easier to reach out and grab the food. They had mentioned at the, at the public hearing that the curb is all scuffed up from people hitting it, so this, this will definitely help.
Okay.
Are you maintaining a single pickup-pay window? Or are they adding a second window in the drive-through?
This is a single, there's not enough width, but it is a singular. They are here if you have detailed questions on it, but yes, this is a single window.
And what was the landscaping I was reading? So the mature trees there are coming down?
A number of those trees are dead. And then the other trees, the root systems are mature, and by replacing the parking lot, they're going to disturb the roots. They think the likelihood of those trees surviving is low, so they'd like to just remove them and replace them with healthy new trees.
Are any of those trees or bushes on the, on the McDonald's parking lot just north of there, or is that all?
All of the, all the improvements that they're proposing are associated with their lot.
Where's the menu board? It's kind of hard to see.
I don't know if I can, it is as you go past the trash enclosure?
Yeah.
Here?
Yeah. Is that it right there, just about a little more than halfway down the building? Or, I mean, it looks like there's a board, is that what? It's that little dot and the little line, is that it? Keep going up. Where's your light?
I've lost.
You lost your light? Okay. So keep going up, up, right there, is that it right there?
Actually, I think it is down here. I'm not one hundred percent sure.
I can speak to that. It's a-
Would you like to, can you come up to the?
Sure.
Thank you. No, no worries.
I'm Mike Emick. I'm with Flynn Restaurant Group. We're the operator of this store. So your question is, where's the menu board? I think it's almost exactly where the current menu board is, which was the first spot you were looking at. It's generally a five-car stack from the window.
Can you, can you put the light back up just so I have a reference? Please, thank you. Well, we'll get you a new light, Andrew. So there or the north of, north of it, right? So that's the original and that's what's going to be the current?
Correct.
Is it a LED menu board? What is it?
Yes.
It's, it's a, like a screen?
Two monitors, like, it's, you know, it's a static board that, or not a static board, it's one that we can have rolling content.
Do you have pre-sold boards or no?
No.
And your five, you can stack five from the menu board until it gets where? Into the parking lot there?
To the window.
Oh, to the window. So between the window and the board is a five-car stack?
Correct.
And their issue is the landscaping is not, we're not blocking enough to Milwaukee Avenue? Is that what the concern is?
Yeah, so the existing landscaping around that edge, it's a series of evergreen trees that at some point, you know, twenty-plus years ago, provided low dense screening year round. They're now, the lowest branches on those are well over the height of a car now, and they're mostly dead, if not fully dead. So they're replacing it with a series of evergreen and deciduous shrubs right around the bend there. And the request from the Planning Commission, which is in the ordinance now, is to add some height to that. So they had, they all topped out at a maximum mature height of, you know, three or four feet, so this would go up a little higher than that.
So are you going to go around the curve, like followed along your drive-through then to the pay window? Or is it just going to be along Milwaukee Avenue where they're looking to do the screening?
It, it goes, so it wraps, I don't know if I actually put that in here. It's in your packet, but I don't think it's in the slides. The, it's a pretty substantial area wrapping around that curve there.
Are you going to be twenty-four hours?
No.
Not on the weekends?
I can't speak to the exact hours. I don't know, but it's not a twenty-four-hour restaurant. I mean, most of ours, you know, close at probably two to four AM and open seven to eight AM.
So just those two hours, you'll likely be closed for them?
Probably three to four hours of downtime.
But it sounds like closing around two AM would be-
Yeah.
Normal.
But I, again, I don't know the specifics there.
Can you show me the lights and what the concern was again? So it's the, it's the white lights, the purple at the top, that's a canopy, that's not LED, is it?
The, I think it actually is an LED. It's hidden, though. The light source is kind of tucked up under a opaque feature of the building. So what you get from it is this sort of wash effect on the, on the facade.
Is it?
Right, so what it, what it is, we paint that top band, it's actually painted purple, the part you see lit. So there's a channel that we put on the top of that band that covers the lights, it's LED strip lights around the building, and it, and they are purple, they glow down it. So it kind of makes the purple stand out at night.
Do we have other buildings that have LEDs around the whole facade?
I, I don't know off the top of my head.
You guys aware of anything?
LED, but the Indigo, the Patel has light beams that shine up that are-
Well, and that's, that's, that's still got to go before Planning and Zoning, right? Again, go back for them or?
For the, the light is considered to be part of the architectural package.
Okay.
It is architectural lighting on the building.
So the, they're, they, it's just the signage that's going back to-
The signage is returning to the Planning and Zoning Commission, correct?
So the thing, I mean, my observation is, you know, you have a light here, obviously all of our buildings, if you look around, they all have some kind of lighting. And there, are they, do they want this light strip blocked with landscaping? Because I think that, you know, you're, you're in a mall, they have to be visible, the business, to draw business.
These are two separate concerns from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The landscaping was just blocking the headlights of the cars around the drive-through, and the question with this one was just how bright is it? It was difficult to tell from the photographs, so they just wanted us to double-check and make sure that there's not much light being emitted from, from these LED lights.
I mean, I'm just saying, are the lots, the, the streetlights in Milwaukee Avenue are brighter than this? Right? And you're on an outlot of a, not enclosed, but there's no residential near the area, right?
That's correct.
But their question regarding the headlights being seen from Milwaukee Avenue has been addressed with the additional landscaping, correct?
That's addressed in the landscape. There's a condition of approval to add even more to what was in the, the original proposal from the petitioner, but, but yes, that's addressed in the ordinance.
Yeah, because that would be a significant concern. Any other comments or questions? So he wants to vote on these two separately or?
They are two separate ordinances, so yes, I think two separate motions, please.
Okay. All right, then is there a, if there are no other questions, is there a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two-three oh eighty-six about the parking and setbacks?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. And then the next item is, you just want to go straight into approval and passage of ordinance twenty-two-three oh eighty-seven, an ordinance granting the special use, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Special use, so that's the landscape architecture?
Yeah, and architectural plan approval for the restaurant with the drive-through.
I just have a little bit of a concern that I just don't want every business putting glow lights all the way around the building. I mean, we've been pretty particular about which-
Yeah.
What signs can be lit up. I know when, when Aldi was coming in, we didn't let them put in an interior glowing sign that would be facing towards, towards the west. They had to have-
Was that Aldi you said?
That was Aldi.
But that's residential, right?
Right. It's sort of residential, but I mean, it was kind of far, but yeah, that was-
But you're still, you could probably see it from Oakmont, I'm sure, right? So that was a concern.
Yeah.
Well, and, and to Trustee Oppenheim's point, once you open a box, you-
That's the concern.
You know, once you've unfolded a map, you can't fold it back up.
Because we don't, yeah, we don't really have any particular limitations on the amount of, the amount of lighting, I guess, around the, the sides of buildings.
We have, we have the, in the sign code, we have some restriction on signage that is constructed using like open neon tubing, that sort of thing. I, I could not find anything that would address this specific, you know, architectural lighting. What, what are the limitations on it?
So this is not a variance, it is something that is within code?
Just within the code and part of the architectural design for this particular building.
So then there's really nothing to stop other businesses from adding light strips all the way around their buildings?
I think when you're looking at locations where architectural review is required, if there was a spot where it's, a new building is proposed, for example, and for whatever reason, there were elements of the design that you thought might be inappropriate in that spot, I, I think you do have some leeway on a case-by-case basis to, to approve it or not approve it as part of an architectural package.
Only if, only if the architectural review was required, but if not, there's nothing sort of stopping other businesses from just adding it right now. Is that what you're saying?
In this, in this format, yes, where the light source is hidden and it's, and it's used to, to just light a, light a portion of the building.
I mean, I, I guess for this particular building, I think it looks nice. It's just, I'm a little concerned about opening that can of worms.
I mean, they're LED lights. I mean, everything you see in signage today now are pretty much LEDs.
That's in signage, though, that's their-
But it's all, well, I mean-
This isn't a sign, this is-
No, but I-
Decorating the building with LED all the way around.
Right. I, I think it's signage because the same company for them is probably doing all this, all the lighting and everything, but-
Sure.
Maybe, maybe there's an ordinance proposed to, how many lumens can it be? How many lights per foot? You know, I, I don't know. You know, I see what you're saying, because you don't want to create everyone-
I mean, I don't want to look like Disney World or whatever-
Right, yeah.
With everyone adding lights to every building.
Although, if we had a Disney-
Because you said to, you know, because they want to attract business, so, so is there any-
I think a good thing, if there's any, because none of us can really come up with a comparison, I don't think, that we can think of right now that has something like that in town.
Do you want to add, say something?
If you could come up, because we have to hear you. Has a white light, but it does wash the wall. You can kind of see, they have a old light that does a similar thing, it's just not a colored light.
They're down, they're down washlights.
Yeah, they're down wash-
So it's, it's a unit that projects down, but it, when it hits the wall, it, it kind of creates a spread. So it's a single light, like maybe this large.
Right.
And then, but it creates the impression of a larger-
But is that, is that, and is that going around the whole building? I don't know if you're able to tell.
There's space, like every, like ten feet.
Right. I mean, it's just like landscape lighting that people have at their homes, just uplighting to the size of the building.
What if it was, I'm just curious, like if it was a white, like a different color light? Because like purple kind of is a little more, you know?
Maybe that's part of the problem, I don't know.
Well, you had a picture there, was that the McDonald's next to?
Yes, the one at seven hundred Milwaukee Avenue.
That has some yellow that looks like it's trim lighting, but it's actually just because of the white wash.
I think one of the things too is, you do look at areas, if it's residential, definitely you've got a problem. This is not, so I don't know. I don't know if you, we change something, rules were it's by residential? I don't know. I, stadium lights, I know going back Libertyville High School, the looms that were produced, the restrictions were that on how many games they can play per, per season or for the year. And, in all honesty, the moon produced more light than the looms on the field of someone's backyard, where the moon actually produced more lighting. And then went over to gra, to another high school, and I see somebody cutting their grass using the light from the stadium. I think you're looking at residential on this point where it's not, it's commercial. Maybe something would go into the rulings of where lighting to be.
Well, then, yeah, that, that wasn't really my concern. I know there's no residence there, and, and we don't really have that many facilities that, buildings that would potentially impact residential. There might be some here and there, but usually there, there's, there's a fair amount of buffer.
You just don't want to open up a purple strip light along the entire Aspen Point. Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right. That, that's the concern, but if we don't, if we don't have a, a policy already, I don't know. We can even-
Well, since it's not a variance, it's, you know?
Right. We, we would just have to reject the package outright if we had concerns about that, but-
Yeah, if it's, what I'm hearing from Andrew is, it's, it's permitted, based, based on his interpretation. And I just wanted to add, if there's a concern about setting a precedent-
Yeah.
With, with a precedent with different zoning dockets, it really has to be apples to apples. It's hard for another user to come in and say, you let them do it, you have to let me do it, because it's rare that two different zoning dockets are going to be that similar. In our, in what you're talking about, Aldi near residential versus, and that's an extreme example, this not near residential. Aldi could not argue that there's some precedent that's been set. It just, it wouldn't work in the zoning context. Apples to apples, you know, I, I think that could be, someone could make the argument, but again, it's hard to do. But what we can do, you know, is go ahead, take a look at our ordinance. May, maybe tighten up the ordinance for future. The ordinance is written the way it is now, but, but if we want to tighten it up going forward, we can take a look at modifying it.
You can take a look at the percentage of looms. I mean, that's what it comes down to.
Sort of, but, but what if, what if the, the strip mall across the street on the east, is that River Tree? If they, if they decide that, you know what, we want to put LED, giant LED lights going across the entire strip mall there?
You know, this was a-
To highlight it so that people are more likely to be attracted to come in like flies.
We'd have to take a hard look at it, a hard answer that off the cuff, but this is a rehabilitation of a, a building. It's a, it's kind of a, a complete gut job of this building to turn it into a Taco Bell versus what you're describing, trustee of just adding, adding to buildings. So I, I think it's, it's a little different.
Right. I'm saying, so is, do we have, do we have any ordinance whatsoever that would require them to ask us for permission to do that even at this point?
I have to, I have to take a look off the cuff. It's a little difficult to answer that, but I, I, I'm not sure, as I said, I have to research that. But I, 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 I'm not sure, as I said, I have to research that.
Then, after our initial approval, even of, for Aldi, for example, what, are they locked into a particular lighting model for them based on that approval or, or can, can lighting be changed?
For Aldi to change their site plan and change their building, they'd have to come and get, they'd have to get permits. And to the extent they change what the ordinance allowed, they'd have to get an amendment to the ordinance. That would take approval. I guess it would depend on exactly what they're changing, you know, it, it's, again, the hypothetical is really, it's hard to develop a complete hypothetical here.
Sure.
But, but if the ordinance was being changed, you'd have to approve that. So we'd have to look at their underlying approval ordinance to see what it is that was allowed.
Okay.
You know, I just want to add, you know, the McDonald's store, you know, it has lights that just shine, kind of shine up and down on their, their signage and their trim. So what if we tell Taco Bell, okay, you could put up this purple strip, which has just got to use, you know, indirect lighting to shine at it?
Well, these are, these are actually less lighting than, than a wash light or, or shining, you know.
Correct, this is.
Yeah, this is actually less lighting than that. Yeah.
It's the color that's appearing. Because I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so then is there, do we, we don't have a motion or second right yet? No?
We don't have a second.
We do have a motion.
Do not have a second.
Is there a second? And this is to approve twenty-three oh eighty-seven?
Eighty-seven.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trust, uh, President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. All right. Next item is approval and passage of resolution twenty twenty-three oh thirty, a resolution granting approval to operate an outdoor special event for the Hawthorne Mall fiftieth anniversary celebration.
I went too fast, sorry. Hawthorne Mall is requesting approval of a outdoor event. It is a, a one-day event, September ninth, which is a Saturday, in the middle of the day, from noon to two. The event would be to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of the mall. It would be physically located in the new Main Street area between the, the two Hawthorne Road buildings. It's a little bit difficult to see at this scale, but the variety of attractions for, for the, those in attendance. The mall representatives are here if you have any questions. The special event application does note that the, the event organizers are requesting additional security assistance from the Vernon Hills Police Department. That is noted in, in the resolution. With that, I would hand it over to the, to the mall if you have any detailed questions about the event.
Any questions or comments from the board? So this event is, do you want to get some publicity for the event, for the timing on it or? Yeah.
Good evening. Tom Sheehan, facility manager of Hawthorne. Yes, so September ninth. I believe many of you are there for our fall kickoff a couple of years ago when we just started this process, so as we further celebrate what Hawthorne has been to this community, you know, so we're fifty years in now, so part of this is our next step, and Hawthorne Row is a huge portion of what the next step of Hawthorne is. So I know that, I was reading the paperwork here, there was some question about traffic and traffic control. So we are going to barricade off Hawthorne Row. We, we will still allow access out of the parking structure for the residences. They will still have the north side of the garage to, to come and go as they please. But yeah, we will have food trucks, we will have some local vendors on, on the sidewalk there, the domain. They're all going, they're going to have a table out there advertising and they have their leasing team out there and try to get more people to lease. We're going to have some live music. We're going to have kids' activities, face painting. We're going to have a meet and greet with a couple of very popular children's characters. You know, and this is all going to be in line with our new, I think we're calling the Spanish step, the new stairwell that's coming down from the AMC. That's going to be presented as, as part of the welcoming to this event as well. So we're going to restructure, I don't know when the last time you guys have driven down there, but we have a barricade that has kind of a temporary park right now. That barricade will be opened up. You'll have the staircase coming down to that park where we're going to have an inflatable slide for kids and, like I said, the meet and greet, face painting, a chalk artist. So it's, it's a two-hour event, you know, just to celebrate fifty years of the community and, you know.
So again, noon to two on Saturday, September ninth?
Yes. And yes, my security director, if had, not as already, but he will be reaching out to our liaison to request some extra presence from, from the police department as well.
All right. Comments or questions from the board?
So is that food for purchase from the food truck?
It is. There are food trucks. So right now, I think we have in line seven or nine food trucks, which we will have parked along the parking spots that are already in place. So they'll be out of the way. People will be freely able to walk up and down the row, sidewalk and street safely.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, then is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero three zero?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Comments? No? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carry.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to it.
See you guys there. Take care.
Sixth item, approval and passage of resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero three one. A resolution authorizing the execution of a first extension to the agreement for operating concession at the Vernon Hills Athletic Complex with Bobo's City Euros Incorporated?
Yes, thank you. As you probably remember from last summer, the Village entered into a license agreement with Bobo's Euros of Vernon Hills to operate the concession stand out of the V-HAC. That agreement included a one-year term, which expired this past June. The agreement also did include an option for a one-year extension of the agreement for the fall twenty twenty-three and spring twenty twenty-four seasons. Bobo's has expressed interest in continuing that, that operation of the concession stand for one more year. We have a representative of Bobo's here this evening if you have any questions, but staff is recommending approving resolution two thousand twenty-three zero thirty-one.
Okay, comments or questions from the board on this? Okay, if there are none, then is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three zero thirty-one?
Quick question. Does, does Bobo's give a portion of their sales back to the, does Bobo's give back a portion of their sales collected back to like one of the sports programs that you're, have the concessions for?
I mean, I did sponsor two baseball teams.
If you could come up to.
I did sponsor two baseball teams.
Okay. All right, I understand.
And I'm paying rent, I think, so.
Yeah, I was just curious. Just, just curious. No, 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 it was just a question that I had. I, I wasn't sure how, how the arrangement was set up, but now I know, so. No, that's fine.
Baseball families came up and offered like a thousand dollars to sponsor both teams.
That's good. Was business good this summer?
Um.
Fair.
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 Fair. The, the fall, not so much.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just going to take some time to, for people to, a little bit more adversity.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Did we get a motion, a second yet? No? Is there?
There's not a motion, so motion for resolution two zero, two, yeah, two zero, two three dash oh three one, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion, a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's no other new business but Communication Assistant Manager Patrol?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. This is just a reminder that this coming weekend, it's the Park District's twelfth annual Little Bear Rib Fest. And starting Friday, August eighteenth, from six PM to eleven PM, and on Saturday, August nineteenth, from four PM to eleven PM at Century Park, there will be an opportunity to enjoy blues, brews, and barbecue. As a reminder, road widening is still occurring on Lakeview Parkway. Therefore, steps have been taken by all the stakeholders to ensure safe passage, which includes remote parking at Hawthorne Center. And we want to emphasize that handicap parking will be available in the Park District parking lot off of Lakeview and Hawthorne Parkway. Security protocols similar to Vernon Hills days have been set up in which there will be one entrance point located at Center and Lakeview Parkway. As always, emergency procedures are in place should there be inclement weather, but as of today, the forecast calls for sunshine and perfect weather for the duration of this two-day event. Come out, enjoy award-winning blues, musicians, barbecue, the bourbon bar and beer. Additional information, information on this event is available both on the Park District website and the Village website.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I had a couple of things I wanted to add. The Saturday, August twenty-sixth, at the Vernon Hills Golf Course, the American Legion Post twelve forty-seven of Vernon Hills is hosting their annual golf scramble outing at ten in the morning and they're looking for people to play golf and/or if you can't play golf, they would be happy to allow you to sponsor a hole or something like that. It's a, a good fundraiser for the Legion. And the other thing I wanted to mention is school's back open, believe it or not. The high school was already back in session and the elementary districts will be going back shortly. So that means for people driving and that to be a, a little more cautious, especially around the school buildings and that, because at the beginning of the year, everything's a little, little hectic, so. Uh, anybody else have any communications? Comments? Okay, so then entertain a motion to adjourn the board meeting and go to committee of the whole, correct?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned and will now go to committee of the whole.
All right, we'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting in order. And is there a motion to appoint trustee Cook? President Pro Tem.
So, aye. Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Motion carries. First item of business is the approval of the committee of the whole.
Motion carries.
Approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions, corrections, additions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Epstein.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. First item of business, the Pickle Mall, Town Line Commons, five fifty-five Town Line Road, Unit One, concept discussion?
Thank you. Pickle Mall is proposing to occupy the former Toys R Us, which is now used by Dick's as a, an outlet, clearance outlet. This is in front of the committee of the whole for two reasons. One, it is a, a special use in this zoning district. They are published for a public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission. As a fully interior special use, we might not necessarily bring this in front of the committee of the whole. However, it is a somewhat unique proposal in that there's a recreational aspect to it, which ties to the, the second reason. The municipal code does require, in this circumstance, a building use conversion certificate due to the amount of square footage this would take up at the shopping center. So, because they would need both the special use approval and the use conversion certificate, and that certificate is the, the authority to approve that certificate rests with the board. I requested the committee of the whole review prior to kicking everything off with the planning and zoning. So for tonight, we do have representatives of the ownership and the, and the business here to present the concept. And from both the staff and petitioner perspective, any feedback that they could use in getting ready for the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, which is actually next week. So if there's any feedback that there would be useful to prepare for that, that, I'm sure the petitioner would appreciate that. And then just looking for, although the formal vote on the, the business use conversion certificate is not prepared at this point, it would come back with the, the special use, assuming everything goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission. So with that, I would like to introduce the petitioner to, to come forward and, and provide some background on this proposal.
Hi, everybody. Mitch Gol, Mitch Golz, owner of GW Properties, here again. Thank you. Happy to be back. I am, once again, we are the owners of the properties, former Toys R Us, and now the Dick's Sporting Good Warehouse. As you know, we've, we were here before you. We bought this property about eighteen months ago with plans to, you know, revitalize it. We're here before you to work on a master sign plan, which we have successfully gone through and completed. And then the, the large effort was to secure long-term tenant for this property. I'm, I'm pleased to be here before you guys tonight with our proposed user. It's something new and exciting, and we'll let them do the more of the talking and the specifics. But we are here before you to seek some approvals and some feedback on what they're proposing. If you recall, and it's, it's outlined in the packet, as part of the approvals of the signed approvals last year, we did agree to, you know, make some other renovations of the property, which we do intend to do, provided this, this project does go forward. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to Pickle Mall and let them dive into a little bit more of what they're doing and why this is a great opportunity for the Village, us, and everyone involved. Thank you.
How's it going, everybody? My name is Wes Shaw. I'm the CEO of Pickle Mall. We are building the premier place to play pickleball in the nation. And Vernon Hills was selected to be our flagship facility throughout the entire nation. We want to, we want to make this our creme de la creme. And so I just want to kind of show you a little bit about who we are, what we are, and what we're looking to build here. So right now, pickleball, as everybody knows, and you can probably hear it outside, it's been explosive growth. We're seeing a hundred and fifty-three percent growth year over year, and there's no signs of it slowing down. With this, you know, there's a huge lack, or there's a huge gap between supply and demand, of course, and we're here to really fill that, that gap. Not only that, pickleball is also trending to be indoors. People don't like playing in the sun. They don't like playing in the snow. They don't like playing in the wind, et cetera. And, you know, pickleball, the future of pickleball really will be indoors. And that's what we're here to build out, is the premier place to play indoor pickleball. So, you know, it's not just about building indoor pickleball facilities. We're building communities within our facilities. Our facilities have a technology proponent that allows players to not only, you know, analyze their film, but actually give them the tools to get better, whether it's with coaches or analyzing film at home, or even playing with somebody in your neighborhood that's better than you. That is, that is our tech stack, quote unquote, that we're giving to everybody in the community. That is our tech stack, quote unquote, that we're giving to everybody in the community. Our, some of the great things about what we've built out, we have one operating unit in Tempe, Arizona, that was just opened up last week. We have had nationwide media coverage, whether it was on Good Morning America, CNBC, and throughout, you know, Fox and ABC's affiliate stations in Tempe. And we're hoping to continue that trend here in Vernon Hills. So, thank you for your time. Oh, yes, I guess the renderings for this will be here. So this isn't a rendering. This is actually our Tempe location. And then these are the renderings for the Vernon Hills site.
Yeah, that's the best one to leave on for a little bit.
Well, I want to go back. I mean, this is the existing facade with some renovation that they've been making here, keeping the character of what was there and then adding to it. This is a, we'll call it a bird's eye view inside.
That's different from what we got in our packet, isn't it? In terms of the loop?
What you probably got in your packet was our Tempe, Arizona, location. That was the rendering for that one. When we submitted it, we weren't completely open, I believe.
This is specific to the site.
This is specific to this site.
Which matches the floor plan.
Yes.
Yeah, so the floor plan that's in the packet matches this. The renderings were example renderings that were initially provided.
We're trying to figure out, do we prioritize 14 incredibly wide courts or 15 that has four courts that are slightly smaller? It's a very granular detail, but it's very important to us. We're trending towards doing 14 indoor courts.
Yeah, this is different than the floor plan that we have in the packet. The center aisle on these in the picture here that you're showing up above, they're all going straight across in the floor plan that we have. There's two going that direction and two perpendicular in the center aisle there.
I'd go with the floor plan. The schematic renderings, I mean, are more intended to be representative in the floor plan, its dimensions, details. You know, this is perspective outside.
Part of the reason I bring that up is especially the ones- to the audience, or to you, but- there's the center aisle, and you see these two are perpendicular to those. So the question is, looking at the pictures on here, it seemed like there's a lot of space. And these, they're kind of jammed in. And so one of the concerns I had overall is, is there enough space to put your things down? Your backpack or whatever that's holding your paddles? Where it seems like there isn't a lot of room in the floor plan that I see here.
That is a number one priority for us, is creating a great customer experience.
Right.
In pickleball, you hit the nail on the head. People do want to have places to hang their bags, to store their goods, have their water bottle, et cetera. We're prioritizing that over an extra court, if that's what you're-
That's sort of what I'm getting, yeah. I want to make sure that it's not just jammed in with courts.
We really want to come with the flexibility in case it, you know, actually spatially looked like it fit more. I think the plan is to trend more towards the 14 with more space. If there's a show court, no different than any other sporting-type facility where there's, you know, one, you know, premier court or something like that. But the intent is to get in there and make sure there's flexibility if they do want to fit more. But I think at this point, 14 is sufficient. This is also a rendering of what it'd look like, you know, with separation between the courts. Obviously, a sense of community, but we'll get into the-
So no locker room or pro shop or anything like that?
So there'll be, you know, light pro shop to be able to, you know, buy paddles, shirts, hats, balls, et cetera. But nothing that'll be, you know, really extensive. We are pickleball. That is our brand. We are pure pickleball, and we build the best playing experience.
So no locker rooms?
No locker rooms.
Okay.
And, yeah, no locker rooms.
What are the likely hours?
At 24/7, you said, right?
Some of our locations throughout the nation can be 24/7. We haven't nailed down the exact hours for this. We do operate from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the minimum.
I was looking at your app, or I was looking at like how it works on your website the other day, and seems very automated, just like a lot of very self-service, pretty much, right? So what kind of staffing do you propose? Are you anticipating to have?
It depends on the time of day, but two to three people will be working staff. There's a fine balance of automation and community building, right? You don't want it to feel sterile, and that's something that's really key to our brand.
I just want to add something here. You know, just in the spirit of, you know, the retail sector of town, which is part of this, you're not going to see any sales tax at all out of this place. So the question I want to give, ask the petitioners, you know, have you looked any big deals around? You know what I mean? Do we want to keep allowing, you know, all these indoor recreation users? And it doesn't pay us anything?
Well, I will point out, Mayor, we've, you know, this is Mitch from GW Properties. We've, you know, we're working with a variety of operators like this. We've had three or four groups solicit us for a proposal on this site. We've been marketing the site for close to 24 months. The previous owner had been marketing it. You know, we're retail developers, and this is a use that's filling in a lot of retail vacancies. The types of space that this use is conducive to needs to have certain clear heights, certain distances horizontally. And they do bring a lot of traffic to centers that are coming from very far distances outside the immediate community. So we can chime in on some of the things that we've seen in the Tempe site, as well as what we've heard from other operators. But the sales tax is important. There will be an element of that. There will be a food and beverage component as well. I can tell you that most of the people that have been looking at the space going on over two years have been other recreation users that are either duplicitous, other things in town, fitness-oriented. I mean, we have a whole line of people who wanted to be here, and this is the first use and user and brand that we feel would be conducive to the property, the site, and be something new and unique offering into Vernon Hills. And, you know, we are very thankful that they want to locate their first location in the Midwest here. As we know, this will bring a lot of press and other options. We'll let him speak to also some involvement regarding the major league pickleball as well.
Well, when this first, when Pickle Mall came prior to talking about coming here, first time I saw something about Pickle Mall, I had a number of residents contact me about, you know, this would be something good for the mall. But it looks like, based on the amount and size of space you need, this is actually a better location. Is that-
Yes, this location fits perfectly for what we need. It's 37,000, 41,000?
It's about 45,000 feet.
Yeah, and it's got the clearance heights that we need for pickleball. Last thing people want to do is be hitting lob shots into a ceiling or, you know, feeling cramped in a space.
Yeah.
It just, this is, it's kind of almost like a unicorn site for us.
Well, I'll also point out, if you're, for those of you who are on long enough, we brought Skyzone to Vernon Hills and the former River Tree Movie Theater, and then Gordmans. And, you know, these types of recreation-type users historically started in the outskirts of towns and industrial parks, places that, you know, could accommodate them, low rent, off the beaten path. And what these businesses have started to find is they do a lot better when they're in retail synergies where people are coming on a daily basis to Target, Walmart, Chick-fil-A, Portillo's, things like that, because you're getting a lot of repeat customers here. The way this business model works is there's, you can come in, you know, out the street and say, I'd like to play for an hour. If you're going to the bowling alley, there's leagues. There's people that come every week at the same time. There is an automated component. So as far as the staffing, they're able to size what level of, you know, capacity they're going to have at a certain time and how many people they have to have here. But this is blowing up across the country, and I think there's not going to be three places that pop up, because I think the first place that gets in is going to kind of cover that market. That's what we're seeing in other parts of the country and particularly the Charlotte area. But we're really excited about this, and this really will give a sense of community, a place to go out with friends and parties and birthday parties, leagues and whatnot. So I think I'd like to make it the equivalent of what bowling was probably 30 or 40 years ago when I was a kid, that you had the bowling alley. And fortunately, those days have changed, but this is definitely something that seems to be here to stay, so.
I'd like to ask Jim Farola a question.
Sure.
How are we doing on, you know, the tax, the amusement tax?
Yeah.
For facilities like this and a couple others that are in retail spaces now?
That is a, that's an option here. The amusement tax currently, as you know, only applies to movie theaters. We can definitely amend that definition to apply to a use like this and draw some amusement tax from this use. You know, that tax is 4% on the price of a movie ticket, and it's collected from patrons as part of, and I'm just not sure how this, the fees will be charged here, but this would, could qualify as an amusement if we amend our ordinance.
They're going to have memberships? So, you know, you go to a movie, each ticket has an amusement tax on it. You have a membership. It's, I'm assuming it's probably like an unlimited, you know, you're only paying then once per month?
Per year. We'd have to see how their pricing structure comes in, but it's an option to look at for us. And there will be food and be- are you serving food and beverage there?
Yes, there will be.
There will be food and beverage tax that comes out of this as well.
And there is a pro shop, and I think as this business grows, that, you know, that there's a lot of flexibility within the space to grow the various elements, depending on what the market demand is. I mean, you know, unfortunately, there's not like a need for a 10,000 square foot store for pickleball items. But they will carry everything. This group is fully integrated into all the, everyone in the industry.
Yeah, I mean, our lead backer is a guy named Steve Kuhn, who's the founder of Major League Pickleball. I don't know if anybody here has ever seen it on ESPN, but it's, it is growing rapidly. And, you know, there's, there are brands and teams alongside it, such as, you know, the Chicago Slice is a pickleball team here in Chicago. And, you know, we're fully immersed in that, in that world as well. So there's-
Yeah, in fact, the place where they invented it up by Seattle has become a major tourist attraction.
Of course.
Are you going to apply for a liquor license?
It's, it's to be determined. It's not in our current plan right now. It's not our brand right now.
You don't have one?
Yeah, and we don't have one in Tempe. So that's actually, that would be for, like, coffee.
Juice bar.
Yeah, juice bar, and so you can sit around, bring in your laptop. Again, our whole thing is about community. And so you can sit there with your laptop, have a coffee, play pickleball. You know, in the age of work from home, people now work wherever they want to. And this could be a great place for people to work, especially if you're, you know, really into pickleball.
Great place for people to work? Is that what you said?
No, it's not going to be promoted for that, but- Actually, it's not being promoted for that, but in Tempe, we actually-
It'd be kind of noisy.
It would be noisy, but it's actually not uncommon. We actually now have people that sit in Tempe and work from there, or they take calls from there during the day. We've got, you know, people that take clients there to play pickleball. Pickleball is transforming what golf used to be with clients, and you're bringing the client to the course. Now they're bringing the clients to the courts.
Get earplugs.
Yeah, you're talking to someone on the phone.
Well, and I will also point, I mean, less specific about Pickle Mall, but I mean, there's, a lot of communities have started to run into issues with cohabitation of this use, with, you know, residential or, you know, even on tennis courts. I'm going to have a tennis player. When I play tennis indoors and it's quiet, and the court next to us is pickleball, the amount of, the frequency of a tennis is a small fraction of the pickleball. So, you know, this is a pickleball facility. This is not pickle and tennis. This is not pickle and volleyball. And I think those types of facilities that are catered towards this and this only will really be the best to thrive. They're not trying to be something they're not, and they've seen great success in their location in a big mall in Tempe. And, you know, we've been working closely with getting them here, because we think this would be a great fit. The Skyzone, for what it's worth, is doing really, really well, and we think this is a different, but will be a good addition to Vernon Hills.
The concept is definitely by far one of the best. As we were mentioning, because of noise, even Park District is having put netting up to try to dent the noise.
Yes.
This is indoors, and this sport has become unbelievable, so.
Yeah.
This is the old Toys R Us, right?
Yep.
Yeah, and look, we're retail development. We lease to all sorts of tenants. And I can tell you, you know, we have, no rock has gone unturned on this site. You know, we have been collaborating closely with the owner of the rest of the center, Spectrum, and, you know, they're avid pickleball players. They're in support. And, you know, there's nothing competing with us, and we think it will stay that way. And this is, you're not going to get a flurry of, you know, six groups that want to come in here, because there's just, the demand's not that high, but we think they'll be moving investment class. A lot of elements that you would never have seen anywhere else unless you've been to, you know, very few facilities. So we're really excited and hope that the board and the Village can embrace that and see it come in here soon.
So what you're looking for from us tonight is just a consensus forum to move forward that-
A public hearing scheduled for next week. So any feedback from the Committee of the Hall to provide for them? They do have a limited window to revise their materials to incorporate that feedback. And then just as a preview to the business conversion certificate, which will come back with the special use, if there's any guidance in the preparation of that application as well.
Please make sure you guys provide AEDs in the facility, automatic external defibrillators?
Yeah.
I'd ask that you provide them in all your facilities as you build them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So any-
Can I ask about the pricing model that was sort of alluded to, and I know is in the packet that-
Go to the options.
Yeah, yeah. Do you want me to go back, or I can, I know it off the top of my head?
Yeah, you can show it, whatever, I'd have to-
I don't know if it's in this, but it is not in this. You know, we've got kind of two different things. We've got a membership that allows players to play at their time, whenever they want, for one membership price a month. Other than that, our drop-in rates range from $8 to $10 per person per hour. So if you want to go in and play with your friends, four other friends, you pay a $10 fee to go in and play for an hour. You can reserve a court, play on your time. You can make sure that you have the court three days in advance if you're not a member. If you are a member, you get a 14-day advanced window for signing up for courts. You get discounts on leagues and events and tournaments, as well as discounts on apparel. And we work with a sponsor named Yola, which make paddles, and you get a discount on paddle sales. And so, you know, that's our current membership structure, and that's what's implemented right now in Tempe, Arizona.
So a group of four for a drop-in was then $40, then, to do that?
So rent a court would be $40.
For an hour?
For an hour.
And what'd you say, if they're members, though, what's the cost?
So if you're, if you're a member and you play with four other members, it's covered by your membership fee.
What's the membership?
So the membership ranges from, depending on the market, you know, $99 to $130 a month.
And there's their, there's no maximum number of hours for members? So you can play all day long or $100?
It's a unique, well, it's a unique system we have right now. So you're able to book six courts, or six court hours at a time.
Okay.
And so you can book an hour Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. But to book the Sunday hour, you actually have to play on Monday to release the hour from your queue. That way, everybody has the option to play. There's no, we will cap memberships so that members can always get a court reservation. That's why people want to go indoors, and that's why they pay for pickleball, is because you don't want to sit out there and wait for a court, right? That is, that's what's frustrating about, you know, playing outdoors is waiting for courts. And so that's how we're structuring it currently.
Yes and no. I was just playing on Sunday, and there is a certain camaraderie that develops when you, when you play with other people that you haven't played with before, and you take turns and you put your rapids-
That's what's fun about pickleball, and we're keeping that same ethos in our facilities, where we have open play hours. Open play hours are actually the most full times for our facilities. And I wish I could pull up a live stream from our Tempe, Arizona, location, because right now, for the next three hours, I think it's 5 o'clock there right now, but for the next three hours, there's 10 courts that are set aside. That is a community court as I feel, where you sign up and you pay a drop-in fee. You don't come as a group, or you can come as a group, and you go and mix in and play with other players that you don't know. Because when pickleball really became, people really adopted pickleball because you do get to meet people that you don't know. You get to chat. It's unlike tennis where you're, you know, 80 feet away from each other. You're only 44 feet away from each other, or really 14 feet. And so people like chatting it up on the courts, and we recognize that and wanted to keep that same feeling from outdoors and bring it indoors, but at a confined amount of time, so that we can appeal to both types of players.
I think there's a demand.
Oh, there's very much.
I think there's a very big demand. Mitch Ratnau, the king of pickleball in Vernon Hills, would be very excited about this.
Right. With him on Sunday, and I was showing him the plans.
The unofficial designated king of pickleball.
I have a prediction. It'll be one of the next IHSA sports.
Yeah.
I'm on the, I'm on the Duper Collegiate Committee, so I'm working with a variety of other people on the board of Duper, which is their pickleball handicap system for, you know, golf has their G.I., their gin system. Pickleball has Duper. And I'm working with the Duper team on actually implementing collegiate- Yeah, their rating system, implementing collegiate pickleball and high school pickleball. So I have one step with you right there.
Yeah.
So we consent tonight?
So, where are you based on it?
I'm based out of Dallas, Texas.
Yeah, if you want me to poll the board, is that what we should do, poll the board about?
Yeah, the formal business use conversion certificate application has not been. But if there's any feedback, that would be helpful at this point.
Yeah. Trustee Schenk?
Yeah.
Markwart?
Definitely. I think this is the, this is definitely something that's going to be a big hitter.
Trustee Forster?
No, definitely. I know many who go to neighboring communities to be indoors right now.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Oh, yeah. I'm very excited about this. So, the one comment related to my earlier comment, just make sure that there's enough sort of communal space, and even between courts, there's space to put your stuff, maybe a bench in between or things like that.
I can tell you're a pickleball player.
Well, if you were there on Sunday, you'd say I'm not a pickleball player, but.
Because you sound, you sound a lot like our customers in Tempe right now, where they're like, it's great to finally be able to put your bags down. I mean, you can even see on our, if you ever go to any other indoor facilities, what you see right there as a walkway in between every single court, you'll never see at any other facility. Because some people have the mindset that you need to jam in courts, just that, like you said. And actually, it's not the, that's actually not the right way to do it. The right way to do it is have a better customer experience for every singular court. And that's what we're doing, and that's what our brand is about.
When do you want to open?
I mean, like, what is your anticipated to build out?
The goals are to get them open by end of the year. So, we have a notice provision with our current tenants, which we'll be issuing, you know, as soon as we're comfortable. It's going to, this will go forward, and they already have the materials, and there's not a lot of interior work that needs to get done because it's all open.
Would you have to redo the flooring, or?
We'll just have to pick up the current VCT tile and buff it out. And then we actually, we work closely with a court manufacturer, actually. So, we come in and bring it in, just like the courts in here.
So, that's the goal. So, just when people don't want to play outside, so.
And the high school's right down the street, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I think this is a great idea.
Thank you.
Very excited.
Now, you get to do your.
Yeah. Yeah, you want to say your usual.
Oh, this is going to technical review, but I would remind you that tonight is not a formal approval. You will go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, public hearing. There will be recommendations relative to your plans. They will be presented back to the Committee of the Hall and the Village Board for final approval. And there may be some additional conditions that the board imposes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks.
All right. There is nothing else, correct? And no closed session? So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee of the Hall and call it an evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Good night, Mayor.
Good night.
Good night, Roger.